All right. Well, hello. How's everyone doing? Thank you for joining us on a Saturday. We really appreciate it. My name is Zaza. I'm going to be presenting today with my partner Jolene. Now, before we dive into today's session, where we're going to work through some practice problems together, we want to quickly introduce ourselves. So I co-own Prep Table, this company, and I also teach nutrition courses at Merritt College in Oakland. I became a dietitian in 2021, and after spending about 10 years in food service and management, I do feel very confident and passionate about that field. And while that's my personal background, Jolene's is actually very different from mine. So that's what makes us a really good team.
Hi, everyone. I hope my mic is on. It's good to see all y'all here. My background is a little different. My background was in neuroscience and then I spent six years working in hospitals and long-term care facilities before switching gears and becoming a dietitian. Zaza and I actually both studied the RD exam. In the start of pandemic, using just black and white paper materials at the time, it was rough, and that experience is what inspired us to build and create Prep Table, a one-stop shop to help future dietitians to pass this exam as studies smarter. In the last four years, we've helped hundreds of students passing this exam, including repeat test takers. And we're proud to say that our current overall pass rate is at 96%. We're very excited to share our expertise with you in today's session. We anticipate this meeting will go about 50 minutes. We'll have a hard stop at 11:50, and we'll save the last minute for general Q and A.
Okay, so for this particular session, we've compiled about 10 to 15 questions total. We'll see how long it takes us to get through these questions, though, as we move forward. Please try to answer questions in the chat box and participate as we go along. That's how we know how you guys are doing and if our explanations are clear to you. We're going to give you about 30 seconds to a minute, depending on the difficulty, to answer each question, and then we're going to go over each one thoroughly. And if you do want to learn more about exam structure, test experience, and tips for anxiety, which we know is a big one for students out there, check out our past recorded sessions on our website under Study Now. And here is our question one. You're not going to need a calculator just yet, but you might need one later on. So feel free to find one, or at least a basic one. Use your calculator on your phone that works too for later. And this is our question one. Non-heme iron found in plant-based foods is primarily in which form? And must be converted to which form before it can be efficiently absorbed in the intestines? You'll get about 30 seconds for this one. Feel free to answer in the chat.
I always love it when we got ABCD going.
I feel like we got some students like me. Yeah.
This means we're doing the right question here.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dive right in. Thank you all so much for participating. This is wonderful. So this is a domain one vitamins and minerals question that also tests your understanding of mineral metabolism. So for the purpose of this question, I know Jolene's gonna laugh at me. I am not really a chem background, so this is what I called them personally. She laughed when I said it the first time, though. So FE3 plus to FE2 plus. We need to remember, so that we're looking at A right now. We need to remember not just the names feric and ferrous, but what their chemical forms are as well. So FE3 plus is feric iron, and FE2 plus is ferrous iron. And here is a mnemonic to help remember this. So three or more to do's is ic, so feric iron, but two can be handled by us, ferus iron. Non-heme iron found in plant foods is mostly feric iron and must be converted to ferrous iron to be absorbed in the intestine. So A is likely our correct answer here. But let's look at the other options too before putting in our final answer. Now, let's look at B. So FE2 plus to FE3 plus. This is the reverse of what needs to happen for absorption in this case. It would actually make the iron less absorbable. So B is incorrect. Then C, ferritin to FE3 plus. Remember, ferritin is the storage form of iron in cells. Think we store goods in tins to keep them on the shelf. It's used after absorption, not before. So C is incorrect. And then D, transferrin to FE2 plus. Remember, transferrin is the transport protein that mainly carries FE3 plus through the bloodstream after absorption. It's not involved in the conversion or absorption process in the intestine, though. So D is incorrect, and A is the best answer. So good job, everyone.
Moving on to our question number two. Which document serves as the official request sent to a supplier to procure goods, including specification, quantities, and agreed prices? Let's see what you think in the chat box.
Oh, wow. We got some rapid fire.
Love it. Who needs 30 seconds? You can do it in five. I'm seeing quite a bit of answers. This is a domain four question, basically testing your definition-based question knowledge. And I'm happy to say, I think a lot of people got it correct. All right, let's go over it together. So the correct answer is B, as I think a lot of people have said here. So purchase order, what is it? Purchase order is a binding contract sent to the supplier after requisition approval. On this form, you will include that exact quantities, specification, prices, and even delivery terms. This is very much like you having a massive Amazon haul, right? You make a list of what you're gonna order, and that is called the purchase order. Now, let's take a look at other options to see why they're incorrect. A, purchase requisition. This is an internal request that is not sent to the suppliers directly. For example, let's say if you're a chef and you need new kitchen tools at work, you could use this internal form to request items from your manager, who has the purchasing power. The manager then will consolidate all the purchase requisitions and make an official purchase order for the vendors. So A is incorrect. Now, C, standing order. What's a standing order? A standing order is actually a type of purchase order, issued to establish an account with a specific supplier to obtain goods, mostly via reoccurring deliveries. Since this question does not suggest this automatic reoccurring deliveries of the same items that doesn't need new approval each time, this answer is also not the best choice. D, an invoice. An invoice is a document requesting payment, right, for goods and services already delivered. So D is also incorrect.
Good job, everyone. Okay, so that brings us to question three. A dietitian notices repeated errors in meal labeling that violate safety regulations. They respond by strictly enforcing the existing protocol and require staff to follow every step exactly as written. This approach exemplifies which leadership style? Make sure to read the question very carefully.
Is that a hint?
Okay, it seems like we have an overwhelming number of answers here. All right, let's go over it together. So this is a domain three management question that tests your understanding of leadership styles. And here's a graphic, a little bit adapted from our lecture 10, to help remember these terms. Let's break down each one down the line. So A, autocratic. An autocratic leader makes decisions without staff input and typically expects immediate obedience. Now, while this style is authoritative, it focuses more on control of people, not necessarily strict adherence to written rules or policies, though. So A in this particular context is incorrect. And I know this one trips students up a lot, so make sure to follow along when we get to the right answer, okay? B, democratic. So a democratic leader would encourage team members to vote or to collaborate to make decisions. And that's not happening in this case. Staff are being told to follow protocol without discussion. So B is wrong, and they're being told to follow steps exactly as written. That's really the key in this one. C, transformational. So transformational leaders focus on inspiring change, improving systems. Once again, not necessarily being shown here, so C is not correct. Now, D, bureaucratic. A bureaucratic leader enforces rules and procedures to the letter. And this could be regardless of whether they're efficient or effective. So in this scenario, the dietitian is prioritizing these rigid protocols over flexibility or collaboration, which really fits the definition. So make sure to read the scenario very carefully, because here I can see that a lot of you were tripped up by saying strictly enforcing, which sounds a little bit autocratic, but the fact that they have to follow the rules exactly as written, that is the key term in this particular scenario, and it would trump out the autocratic specifically, okay? So D is a better answer in this case.
All right, everyone. Let's move on to our question number four. My graphic is half-floating. It's all good. You can still do this. How wide at the minimum should a kitchen aisle be for two workers with one mobile equipment to move through? All right. How wide at the minimum? So when you have an answer, feel free to type that in the chat box.
I think this one's a bit of a lesser known.
Wow.
Good question, Joe.
Let's, let's do it. Everybody, put your answers on the chat. Let's see. We're here to practice and trying to understand the right and wrongs and how we can get better. This is somewhat of a tricky question. So I'll give five more seconds for last-minute answer drop-in before I start explaining. All right, closing the chat here. This is our domain four question, right? Testing your knowledge in kitchen equipment and facility planning. Now, a kitchen aisle needs to be at least 36 inches wide for one person to move through. Why 36? This is because ADA mandates 36 inches as the absolute bare minimum for a single-direction wheelchair passenger in both the kitchens and the hallways. But look at this question. This question is asking two person with additional mobile equipment, right? So we know A at 36 inches is gonna be a little bit too narrow. Now, remember this for the RD exam. Kitchen aisles need to be around 48 to 52 inches to accommodate two people to pass, one with equipment, one without. So this means answer C at 50 inches is most likely correct. All right. Lastly, if you have a very busy kitchen, right? Think about an aisle that need to accommodate heavy foot traffic and mobile equipments need to pass through. You need at least 60 inches wide. So although D is wrong in this case, because this question is asking at the minimum for two workers with an equipment, but if another question were to ask you how wide at minimum should a kitchen aisle be to accommodate heavy foot traffic, then 60 will be correct in that case. All right. All of this is really important to remember in domain four, because facility planning is really important for safety. All right, let's move on to our next question.
All right. A low-income mother of preschool-aged children wants to improve her family's nutrition knowledge, develop healthy meal planning and budgeting skills, and receive ongoing support to maintain these lifestyle changes at home. Which community nutrition program is best suited to meet her needs?
Got some variety here again.
We have a variety of answers. This is good.
Excellent. We're gonna give it another... What do you think? Another five seconds here?
Another five to 10. I think this is a really important question to get it right.
Okay. So this is a domain two, community nutrition program question, and it's focusing on linking client needs with appropriate nutrition programs. And we created a really great supplement for this in our program, and we highly recommend using it to learn the need-to-know for each program. So in this particular case, we're looking for the best option for the low-income mother seeking help with nutrition knowledge, meal planning, budgeting, and lifestyle change support. So let's see what fits. Let's look at, we'll go down the line as usual. So A, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP. So this provides money for food through EBT benefits, which helps families purchase groceries. But it doesn't really focus on teaching nutrition, budgeting, or meal planning skills. So it's not ideal, and A would not be correct in this case. And remember, there is a difference between SNAP and SNAP Ed, where SNAP Ed does focus on that nutrition education component, okay? But here we're asking, or, well, the answer says SNAP only. B, Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program. Now, this one is specifically targeted to low-income families, and it's, it provides nutrition education, healthy meal planning, food preparation skills, budgeting strategies, and ongoing support to encourage long-term behavior change. So B is a great contender. Let's benchmark it. C, Child and Adult Care Food Program. This reimburses childcare centers and daycares for serving nutritious meals. It benefits kids in care, but it doesn't directly educate the mother or the family on nutrition skills. So C is probably incorrect. And then D, Women, Infants, and Children, or WIC. This is for women, infants, and children under five. But, and it does provide some nutrition education and supplemental foods, but it isn't designed for ongoing in-home support or skills development for the whole family. So D is incorrect, leaving us with B, Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program as the best answer. I like to call it F-NAP. Jolene laughed at me when I said that.
F-NAP is actually one of the first federal program to start giving money and nutrition education. So it's really important we remember this program. All right, let's take a breather here.
All right, so we're about halfway through our session now. As you can see, we're very focused on visuals and auditory learning here at Prep Table. And we've dedicated a lot of time creating these memorable graphics, tables, and charts like the ones that you saw today and will continue to explore with us today, hopefully, to help you connect these key concepts within the RD exam. And so the idea here is that any student with basic nutrition background can use these lectures to strengthen their knowledge in all four domains. And we have 16 total lectures in our complete program. Each lecture package includes a recorded lecture video, a worksheet, and supplements which contain information we didn't necessarily have time to cover in the lecture, but is nevertheless important to know for the RD exam. And then finally, as you study, you can test your knowledge with our built-in RD exam practice questions in each lecture. And these are designed to solidify key concepts and track your learning progress.
Now, we know every student learns differently, so we designed three flexible ways for you to prepare for the RD exam, depending on your needs and your budget. Our first option is always our complete program with 75-day access. This is $415. It gets everything you need to really get ready for your RD exam. The 75-day access also includes a structured study plan plus a free 45-day extension if you don't pass on your first try, covering the CDR's mandatory wait period. If you prefer to study at your own pace, or maybe you only need a short duration, then our subscription plan might be a better fit. At $199 a month, this is the most cost-effective way to get full access to a comprehensive RD exam prep program. Finally, our domain packages are perfect for students with targeted learning needs. Let's say you need extra help in just one area. This is perfect for brushing up your weak spots without committing to our entire program. Now, no matter which option feels right for you, you're not doing this alone. Zaza and I will be with you every step along the way. Now, with that being said, let's come to our question number six. A 63-year-old female patient was admitted to the hospital after a car accident. She is currently unconscious and malnourished. The doctors and dietitians want her to be on nutrition support to optimize her condition. Which form of nutrition support would be appropriate for this patient while utilizing full GI tract function?
We'll give him a minute for this one.
I'm seeing some answers. Good. I'll give 10 more seconds for everyone to have a chance to write your answer if you choose. All right, let's go over this together. This is a domain two question, right? Testing your knowledge on appropriate feeding methods. Now, after reading this question, a key term should really jump out to you. That is, this patient is unconscious, right? What does that mean? That means she can't swallow on her own via mouth, right? So that means A, a high-protein puree via mouth, is definitely wrong. A is out. Now, the question is also asking for nutrition support that utilize the full GI tract. That means any kind of PN is out of the question, right? Because PN goes straight to the vein and therefore is not using the full GI tract. And if you take a look, that means C, a well-balanced PN via central line, is definitely incorrect. You're left with B and D. B is a BCAA formula via a nasogastric tube. D is a polymeric formula via a nasogastric tube. Now, the only difference here is between the formula, right? So what is BCAA? BCAA is short for branched-chain amino acid. This formula has broken down proteins into amino acids. This is specialized for patients with muscle wasting and really severe malnutrition. This formula does not have intact protein, right? So it doesn't stimulate the full GI function. On the other hand, the polymeric formula is designed as the standard nutritionally-complete formula for individuals who can digest proteins. So when you're down to between B and D, the polymeric formula in option D is definitely the better choice. And just keep in mind, when a patient is admitted to the hospital without trying any formula to start, it's always good to start them on the standard or polymeric, because it's more affordable, it's cheaper for the patient, and it's more readily available. So given that consideration, D is definitely the right choice. Good job, everyone. Let's go to our next question.
All right. And if any of you need to head out, like Gabby, make sure to note that we are recording this session. It will be online later, okay? So question seven. A patient taking microside is at risk for developing which electrolyte imbalances? I'm gonna give you a minute for this one. The key here is knowing the medication.
We have a lecture dedicated just on medication, so it's really important. You, you know these very common names, both for your internship, your clinicals, and for the exam.
Okay, don't be shy. Answer if you can. All right. Guess I'm gonna move forward with this one. All right, guess I'm gonna move forward with this one. So this is a domain two question focusing on medications, and in this case specifically diuretics. So first, we need to identify the medication microside. And this is a thiazide diuretic, which can also appear as the generic name hydrochlorothiazide, and you need to know the two interchangeably. Uh, they do test either name on the exam. So you have to make sure you know all of them like the back of your hand. And what you need to remember about thiazide diuretics is that they increase urinary excretion of potassium and magnesium, but they promote calcium reabsorption in the kidneys. So with that in mind, let's look at our answer choices here. Hyperkalemia and hypomagnesemia, A. This combination is incorrect in this case. Thiazide diuretics cause potassium loss, not retention. While hypomagnesemia is possible, hyperkalemia is not. So, and, and that's more associated with potassium-sparing diuretics. So if it was asking about spironolactone, that could have been a potential here. But not the case, so A is incorrect. B, hypokalemia and hypomagnesemia. Thiazide diuretics increase the urinary excretion of both potassium and magnesium, which would lead to low potassium and low magnesium. So this is likely the correct answer in this case. Let's look at the other two, just in case. C, hypercalcemia and hyperkalemia. Thiazides may mildly increase serum calcium due to the decreased calcium excretion. So hypercalcemia is possible, but once again, hyperkalemia is not. Uh, thiazides cause potassium loss, making this combination unlikely, okay? So C incorrect, and then D, hyponatremia and hypocalcemia. Hyponatremia can occasionally occur with thiazine use, particularly in elderly patients, but hypocalcemia is not typical. Thiazides help the body retain calcium, remember? So this pair doesn't track in this case. B, the best answer.
All right, good job, everyone. Let's go to our question number eight. Which piece of commercial equipment may be restricted in a food facility by a local law in the United States? Sometimes on the RD exam, you get these one-liner questions and, um, you just gotta know them and know them well.
And what I also like to tell students, if you get trumped on something like this, think back to your internship and what you experienced when you were specifically doing your food service, and maybe you were auditing kitchens. Was there something that you might have not noticed there that you would see in a typical household? And that could help you answer this question.
It's true. Think back to when you do your food service rotation in a large facility. Did you notice any equipment that you don't typically see? I'm gonna again, get ten more seconds for everyone to write on their answers before I jump in and give the explanation. I see a variety of choices. I'm just taking a look at a chat right now. That means we're doing a good question. I'm gonna clarify this. Last five second. All right, let's go over it together. This is a domain four question. Again, testing your knowledge of regulation and kitchen facilities. In many locations, the use of garbage disposal in commercial kitchen is either restricted or outright banned due to the concerns about the impact on the sewage system and water treatment plants. While some areas may allow them under very specific conditions, like requiring a grease interceptor. Many cities are moving towards limiting or eliminating their use altogether. This is why A is the correct answer. And if you recall back to your food service, uh, in a commercial kitchen area, you will notice there is not a garbage disposal right underneath the three, um, three sink area for dishwashing, right? You can't just put the waste into a garbage disposal because the oil will clog, um, the plumbing very easily. And what you will see is there is a specific large trash can or a tube that people put grease directly in that. And every once in a while, just like the garbage truck pick up the garbage, you have a grease truck that comes in just picking up that grease, uh, to avoid fire. So this is something you gotta know. Uh, garbage disposal is typically not allowed in commercial kitchen.
A great question.
Moving on to our next question.
All right, and this brings us to our calculation question. So like I was saying earlier, if you found a little basic calculator or if you're using your phone, either way, it works. Uh, let me read this question out to you now. A restaurant expects to serve seven hundred and fifty customers during its lunch service, which runs from twelve PM to two thirty PM. If the table turnover rate is three customers per seat per hour, how many seats are needed to accommodate this volume? We're gonna give you a minute for this one. Some quick calculating, guys. Good job. Excellent. Seems like everyone's got a really good grasp on this one, which makes me happy. All right, let's go through it together. So this is a domain four food service management calculation question, and we cover this in our lecture thirteen. If the, in this case, we're being asked to calculate the number of seats or chairs needed to serve a projected customer volume. So let's start by identifying what's actually given to us here. So we're given a total customer, so we have seven hundred and fifty customers. We're given this lunch period of twelve to two thirty, which equates to two point five hours. And quick tip here, make sure to convert the time into decimal format when you're doing the food service math. So fifteen minutes would equate to point two five, half hour to point five, forty-five minutes to point seven five. And then we're given this turnover rate of three customers per seat per hour. So let's go ahead and solve the problem. The first step is to determine the total customer capacity per seat. So let's take the three customers per hour, and we're gonna multiply that by two point five hours, which is that lunch period. And that gives us seven point five customers per seat. Then step two, we're gonna calculate the seats needed. We're gonna take the total customers divided by capacity per seat, which we just calculated. So seven hundred and fifty customers divided by seven point five seats gives us a hundred seats. So the correct answer is B. And I'm happy to say that all of you seem to have gotten that one right. So good job on your food service math.
Yes, uh, this type of question is pretty common on the exam, so it's always good to have really good grasp on this. And yes, like Zaza said, remember to convert your time. Don't just use the minutes. If the unit's saying hours, always convert them into hours first. Units check units, uh, always make sure about that. Let's go to our question number ten. A patient with severe dysphagia is advanced from NDD level one to level two. Which food could now be safely introduced? I'm gonna give everyone about at least thirty seconds to write down your answer in the chat.
Yeah, these dysphagia diet questions can be tricky.
Yeah.
Especially because of the NDD versus IDDSI, so.
It's true, um. Dysphagia is one of those you gotta know and know them well, a mentee condition. Because as a dietitian, uh, in any clinical setting, folks that can't swallow well, uh, is always gonna be a priority to check on their nutritional needs. All right, I see some different answers. That's good. That means we can go over it together to figure out what is the right choice. Now, this is a domain two question, right? Testing your knowledge of dysphagia diet. To solve this question, you need to know the national dysphagia diet levels very well, the NDD levels. So let me show you a, uh, consolidated graphic here. As you can see, there is dysphagia diets, um, in both the new version and the older version. IDDSI, which is the International Dysphagia Diet, Diet Standardization Initiative came out standardized in like twenty twenty-two. So this is somewhat new to the RD exam, and they're allowed to ask questions in that arena. So you gotta know IDDSI on top of NDD. Now, let's take a look at NDD level one, right? NDD level one is all puree foods with no lumps and no chunks, right? NDD level two is mechanically altered foods. Patients can eat soft and moist foods that can be mashed with a fork. Now, since this patient was just advanced from NDD level one to two, you're now looking for mechanically altered foods that are newly introduced to her diet now, because she can eat that now. So let's take it all, can't talk today. Let's take a look at all the questions, uh, all the answers here. A, mashed avocado with no lumps. This is the NDD level one food. So this is not the newly introduced ones, right? Because she already had this under her belt when she was at NDD level one. B, puree chicken salad. Again, puree signal, NDD level one. So this is also incorrect because it's already in her diet, right? This is not new. C, soft and moist meatloaf. This dish is indeed fork mashable. So C is the best answer so far. Let's benchmark it and take a look at D. Yogurt with whole blueberries. Ha, this is a tricky one. Yogurt by itself, um, might have been okay, but the whole blueberries, they're firm and a choking hazard, right? Blueberries need to be pureed for level one or mashed for level two. So to be appropriate for her diet, um, you need to at least smash that blueberry a bit to mix with that yogurt. So this means the correct answer here is C.
That's a good.
All right, kinda tricky, but it's always good to keep in mind what each of these levels entail.
All right, question eleven. What is a mirepoix and what is it made of? This is great for our culinary peeps out there.
Gotta know your cooking.
Cooking on top of everything else for this exam.
Yeah, this, um, the RD exam is somewhat scattered. It feels like, uh, because it just covers so much thing. It feels like a night's sky, everything's letting up with this topic and that topic. Feels like you gotta know it all. Let me take a look at chat.
Got some, uh, variety there, so it's a good one. I'm gonna give it another ten seconds and go from there.
Sometime you can see this, uh, blend being sold at grocery store already frozen in a bag. If you do shopping, you might also see this.
I'm French, so I saw a lot of this personally. So this is a domain one food science question. Uh, if you're a chef or you like cooking, as I mentioned earlier, if you're a culinary peep, uh, you might already know about mirepoix. Uh, but in case you don't, let's go over it together. Option A, so a sauce made from tomatoes, garlic and onions. That actually sounds more like a sofrito, if you've heard of that, or a, just a tomato-based sauce, but not a mirepoix. So this one is out. Option B, a method of cooking meat by marinating it in wine, herbs and spices. Uh, no, that is describing a marinade in this case, not a mirepoix. Option C, a recipe base consisting of diced onions, carrots and celery. So yes, this is the correct answer here. Uh, in classic French cooking, mirepoix is made with about two parts onion, one part carrot and one part celery. And then you cook that gently in butter or oil to release the sweetness and build flavor. And it's typically the base of a lot of good soups and stews in French cooking and also other styles of cooking. And let's look at the last one too. Option D, searing vegetables before adding them to a stew. So that's more like sauteing or browning. Mirepoix is cooked low and slow, it's not browned. So remember, mirepoix is that trifecta of onion, carrot and celery, and it is the quiet flavor base for soups and stews.
For soups and stews. Correct answer is C.
Some sauces, if you wanna go there.
That's right. Moving on to our question number twelve. Under Maslow's hierarchy of needs, a person using EBT for groceries is most likely not worried about which of the following? Good. I already see a lot of great answers here, so. Let's go over it together. All right, to answer this question, you gotta know Maslow's theory in domain three. Now, Abraham Maslow is one of the most well-known American psychologists and professor at the time at Columbia University. He created this, right? This hierarchy of needs shown by a pyramid, representing how our needs are ranked from the most basic survival needs to the highest self-actualization. This theory is based on the premise that we as humans are motivated by needs ranked in this particular order from the bottom to the top. So for our question, if a patient is using EBT for groceries, he or she is likely struggling with basic needs, right? Which means he or she is most likely not too worried about the higher needs. And among the three higher needs, self-actualization is on the tippy-top, right? And among the three higher needs, self-actualization is on the tippy top, right? The furthest away from the current struggle, which means D, self-actualization is the best choice. Alright, that was a pretty good job. We're coming up to eleven fifty, so we'll stop.
Eleven fifty, so.
That's pretty great.
Yeah, did great. So let's just skip to here. Perfect, Joe. Thank you. How did you all feel about those practice questions? Ah, we saw a lot of variety, a lot of great participation today, and we really appreciate you being here with us. So if you did like our teaching, you could find us in the following ways. Ah, first and foremost, at our website, so www.preptable.org. Ah, we also host all sixteen of our lectures on a platform called Teachable. Currently, our teacher, or excuse me, our lecture fifteen focusing on ENPN is free and available to the public on this platform. And this is a great way to see if our teaching styles match your learning needs. And we're also on TikTok. Ah, we do RD exam tips and questions of the day there. It's a free resource and a wonderful way to just get more study tips. So please follow us there if you don't already. And if you're looking for more RD exam questions, we've also got you covered with this, a free RD knowledge self-assessment tool. It has fifty questions that covers all four domains. And the best part is that we've already posted a detailed explanation video on YouTube where we go over every question very much like we did today, going over which one is right and why the wrong answers are wrong. And you can find that on our website under the resources section.
Thank you again so much for your active participation and being here with us. Before we start our Q and A, we want to let you know that we'll have today's session recorded and it will be posted on our website. Once again, go to our website, click resource or study now, you'll find all the videos. Ah, we have about eight minute now for general Q and A. So if you're comfortable, you can speak up or you can write your question in the chat. Ah, if you have longer or more personal question, you can always email us at team@preptable.org. We prioritize answering our students. We aim to get back to everyone with a question in two to three business day. Ah, now, if you would like to get notification for our next ah free resource or a study session, you can subscribe directly on our website on preptable.org, scroll all the way to the bottom and put in your email. Um, and we look forward to connect with you there.